It's 12 o'clock PM. For the record, we have in attendance Councilman Faldonia, Councilman Carrasco, Councilwoman Arona, and Councilwoman Torrea. At this time, are there any public comments? No public comments, we'll go to our consented, non-consent agenda. Item C1, discuss, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of city-owned land legally described as 1 through 18 Block 20, Pecos Airport exempt, to Reeves County for the purpose of Veterans Museum, Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication struggling.
Mayor and Council, this is something that we're bringing before you. I can tell you that the last request, some of y'all know exactly what it pertains to. It's 15.36 acres. We had tentatively agreed to talk to them about the soccer field over there, and we were going to get $5 million for that. So what I'm asking for is they want a much bigger ask. So I want to be able to negotiate with them and come up with some agreed-upon amount and possibly services, in-kind services that they're going to take care of, that I can have those conversations with the judge and come back to you all for approval of a contract if we can get to that point. The museum already has your design, I think it's up to, I think the museum was up to $56 million right now. I mean, the visual that was presented was fantastic, pretty cool. It looks out of place here, but that's okay. We're all about, if you want a shock and wow factor, that's going to have a wow factor, there's no doubt about it. There's been discussions about whether or not we could incorporate something like a children's museum in it. It's something that I'm going to have the conversations with the judge individually and the commissioners, if you all don't mind. So I just need you all to tell me, move this thing forward, let's get it done. The county has already approved most of the stuff with the architect, so I think it's going to start happening pretty quick. So this is not something we're going to sit on for very long.
This is including the land that has the, those two treasures?
It does. It does. And they will have to buy those out. I think the EDC will have to help facilitate that if they can't do it directly, but it's not our problem. It won't involve us in any way.
This is a huge amount of green space that we're looking at.
It is. And...
What about our fitness track?
Fitness court is not included in that.
So what they're looking at...
And that's where the walking track that Holly has, that she got the grant for, would be incorporated into some of that, into the residual and their stuff that we are, that I'd like to take a look at, that I want to negotiate, that we get not only Chano Pretto, but Martinez Field thrown in with that, so that we have places for the kids to play right now. But I'm also not saying that we don't want to do something else on the, on the west side, where our older fields are at, either refurbish or put something else in there for green space that we can do something with. It's something that, you know, I'm going to have to ask you all's input on if we get to that point or when we get to that point. We all know that there's been a lot of talk about pools. I think three commissioners right now want a pool in their area. So I think if we can find a way to let the county pay for pools, it's much more beneficial to us to let the county pay for it. And I don't know if you all have any more questions about it or any guidance on that? Yes, sir?
Can you pull up, can you connect this to Google Earth and pull up the land, please, on the screen?
Yeah, I've seen the drawings for the museum, it's a wow factor, but there's other things that... And I had talked to the city manager about it. If they want that land or any more land like that, you said that we'll take the Martinez Field and the Chano Pretto Field, and then build probably two or three more to satisfy our community.
We're going to have to develop more, there's no doubt about it.
They've been asking for walking trails out of Maxi Park, and now we're taking Maxi Park away.
It will not do anything from Holly's, one that was approved by the Parks and Wildlife Department for the walking trail, that would still be available if we need, if, to incorporate into there.
So the, the public is misinformed. They, the majority of them think that the cyclone fields belong to them at practice, and we need to make that very clear, they do not. So the fields itself, and that's if we were to change that, but their impression is that the cyclone fields are sitting there, we can't use them. Majority of those fields coming from a coach like myself who's been coaching for five years now are not utilized because of their damaged fields, but at the same time, the community doesn't just want all baseball fields, right? So you have to find the balance. So what Leo was talking about, can we show the council what land, first of all, before we get into this, so we can make sure we're on the same page, to know what and whatnot? I mean, you can just point it out if you don't mind.
Here. The 15.36 acres that we're talking about is this area.
Correct.
Right. This is a soccer field that we said that we would let them, in exchange for that.
Three times what Richard was raising.
This is going to be three or four times, okay? There's no doubt about it. Leo's already aware of that. The museum would take up this. They wanted all of this too, we said no from that standpoint. But this is 15.36 acres, so there's a big difference there. So there's some value that comes into play. And the county right now, from their architect, he doesn't want much, okay? And, I mean, like engineers, architects, some of them have a vision, and they don't want to modify the vision. And I believe right now that is the judge's vision, okay, to move this through. So I don't know what's going to happen, but this 15.36 acres here is what we're talking about.
And one thing I encourage the council is for us to have a workshop to discuss this with the other county commissioners, so we can be on the same page. Our feedback that we received in the public, majority of swimming pools, walking trails, pickleball courts, am I missing any? I mean, this is, I think that would be...
Practice fields, you know, just...
And some, a couple of practice fields.
Practice fields, yes, sir.
And that's where they come in play, by getting the Martinez, and we get the...
Chano Pretto. Yes, sir.
We need to start taxing these old field companies that keep promising us that say we want to get involved and find some kind of fund to create, so we can start dumping money, start renovating these fields up to par, and get rid of the grass and put turf. So that's the suggestion, but like I said, that's something that we could talk about in a workshop, so we can all understand what is expected. But with the incline of services itself, that sounds like a great idea, you would sell for a certain amount, and incline some services to repair our streets. So it's a double-edged sword, the community's winning either way, because you're not only giving them a quality of life, but you're giving them streets. And with that extra money, you can use that money to expand or build what you need to do anyways, because we're not losing.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I think that's a great idea, and we're not really losing much, but at the same time, we're gaining, and that's been sitting there forever.
It has.
I mean, so we have it on the book, let's see what we can do, pushing forward as a council.
So if we have, once we agree, has Leo given you an amount, what he's willing to pay for it?
He has not.
Or do we know what we want?
I know, I have an amount, but I want to negotiate. And I can tell you that I want to start high.
Yeah.
Because if we start high and it says yes, we're good. If we start high and it's no, then I have a little wiggle room to at least negotiate. And the judge and I, as well as the commissioners, we have a good relationship.
He said yes, you didn't go high enough.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want him to do that, because I doubt that's ever going to happen.
You said, you mentioned that some of the commissioners, or three commissioners, want to build pools in precincts, if that makes sense?
Yeah, or they have money set aside to build pools now.
To me, it's like, you know, they said, if they build a pool, all of the splash park, they give it to the city, we have to employ benefits or something, you know, to build. If they're going to build pools, that then...
Well, my recommendation to council and to the judge would be if we build a pool, and I've had this conversation with several of y'all, it would be much easier for the rec to manage that, since they already manage lifeguards and stuff like that, is to just add it on some of the assignments as part of the rec center. They already have the staff that know how to do that and manage it, it would be, it would be an opportunity to, you know, for efficiency. If the city's asked to do it, it's number one, it's going to be a tax burden on us, and we would, it makes it more difficult, because then we have to compete with the other entities, and I'd rather not compete with the other entities if they already have it. And I think commissioners are understanding enough to where they can absorb a little bit of that way. It may mean that we put in some type of interlocal agreement with it, that it's a city pool, but it's managed by the rec center through an interlocal agreement. That would be my recommendation to you all, because I don't think I have the staff right now, and we could add staff, but a pool's not easy to do. I've managed private pools before, and it wasn't fun.
It's very costly to maintain.
It is.
Now, with the earthquakes we're having, you know, they're small enough, could start cracking five bases, and we have to leave, and we're stopped, they have to close theirs for that same reason, we're barely holding onto one.
Yeah.
But this pool that was closed here, was, because it eventually cracked in the bottom while it was sinking, so...
Yeah.
I like to see, you know, where the splash park is at right now, with that little empty area, it's extended, it could be, it'll be more attractive.
Holly and I have had conversations there about that. The one thing that we have to realize is, it would probably be easier to manage, because the splash park is seasonal, any outside pool's going to be seasonal. So that's where we have to take into play, how much use. I mean, I can tell you, community pools are a blast, there's no doubt about it. You get out there with your family and stuff like that, you see more people having fun than you see at other things. We have events where it looks like people are having fun, our 4th of July event, it looked like everybody was having a blast. A community pool's going to be the same thing. It's just that, do we need three community pools? I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to fight with the commissioners on that, that's up to them. That's their dog, that's their dog in point show.
And we have, we have the north side, the east side, and Maxi Park, that's called that.
Well, the feedback I'm getting from the commissioners, it feels like a race to build a pool, and it shouldn't be a race. We need to take pride, when we build something, we need to come together as entities to talk. So if we had to put skin in the game, and we had to put 2 million, for example, and they put 3 million, centralize the pool, put a little pride behind it, instead of just rushing and just throwing a simple design out, I feel like this community is always quick to just throw something out, and our bosses, the 14,000 constituents that we have...
100% agree.
Are asking for something with a wow factor. We're not going to build a SeaWorld aqua work center, right?
Right.
We're going to come together, and I've seen pools, and especially with the economy right now, I'm going to make a point, I just booked a Southwest airline ticket for $30 to Dallas, because the economy's low. So if we're going to build, let's build while it's low right now, and we can get a bang for a buck. So a pool that costs 2.5 is now maybe 1.5 mil. And if we keep dragging, but like, all this requires a workshop, I keep screaming workshop, workshop, and we all need to be present to have an input. When I speak, I don't speak because I love to speak, I speak because I hear the community, and they feel like, hey, they're not listening to us. They're on social media, they're all over the community telling me in the sports world, hey, this is what we want, but don't just give us something simple. Let us see a return on our investment, that we're paying all these high taxes, give us a quality of life, but give us with a little bit of a wow factor, right? And not to go on and on, but Wink is embarrassing us right now. If you go to Wink, they have some really nice stuff, but there's no need right now to say, hey, let's just build it because this person. Find the central hub, it could be the Pecos Elementary, it could be one of our parks, come together and put the money together and say, let's start with this, and if it doesn't work out, at least we tried, right?
Yeah.
But you know, you've got, where the Pony League Field is, the Rocket Park, and for the Athletic Pool, that area still is ours, it's going to be ours. We're selling the other block, but that area right there, that would be, if nothing's going to happen there to blade it off and do two, two or three baseball fields there for the community. Or put a pool there, or redo the Rocket Park, but redo it totally, you know, totally new, because it's been there for years and years. And then fence it on the backside, so we won't see all those trailers and the airport, but you know, what I'm telling you, about this area.
Yes, sir.
But if there's a chance that we can do something else there, and I'm like Hector Carrasco, and I talk to the people, you know, the people don't, they're excited about the water park, but really, not a lot of people, locals will not go to the water park. We're doing the water park like we did the Splash Park. And so I believe if we're going to have three pools, that's fine, but I think we need to have one centralized, a pool that, and I give you a bunch of books, remember?
Yes, sir.
That have pools, that, man, they would look nice. And I agree, we need to sit down with the commissioner and all that, okay, we're going to do this, but if we're going to have a pool here, and it's just a regular pool, and then a pool over here, we're kind of defeating the purpose of what we want. Plus, if everything is in this area, if we're going to do the trails like the schematic that Holly drew out, that would be great there in this area, because it's all green space, and we went to Andrews for the cross-country, and Andrews, where they did it, is just a sports complex, it's six softball field, but they did it all there, everything was green, the park, everything was good. And our park is, I mean, second to none, is, I mean, the grass is awesome and all that, but we need, we need to incorporate it, like, for that pond and all that, that would be great, because it's going up here, coming down, and it gives it a totally different visual that we have in that particular area, especially with the rec center and all that stuff. But if they want, if they want that piece of land for their museum, because I saw the deal for the museum, that thing is going to be awesome.
Yeah.
For what we, and we've got to make everything that's going to be around it to look just as good.
Well, and that's where you all's comments about a pool, if we involve the county that way, I think most of us know, the judge likes to do things with a little bit of a wow factor. He started doing things just halfway, so that would feed right into that.
So what would happen to that land where the, like, the little triangle that I can see, like, where the existing memorial is? How is, like, what would happen to that land with all of those fixtures and...
This would not be moved.
Okay.
This would not be moved. This park is not going to be moved at all.
Okay.
We would incorporate something, we probably need to work, we need this as a soccer field or a football field.
Okay.
I can tell you, this area right here is where the pump station that we talked about that we have coming in will be covered. My idea is we're going to fence it with something that's nice, and my idea would be to put some type of, this would be a great feature or something on that, that would look good. Whatever, Mayor and Council decide, whether it's veterans, or it's with the park here, or whether it's something else that represents Pecos, I think that would be a good way to do that. Plus, take some of the visual. This is a great landmark, but if you put water tanks and pump station here, it takes away from it, so we fence it with something that's going to do it. So that we're not degrading the vision, we're upgrading it from this.
Well, and then with it being tied into the Veterans Park and the museum, you could have the Veterans, have a mural there.
Yeah, that's my way of thinking.
So the proposed Veterans Museum would take up all of that space if they currently want, I guess that's like parking and all of them?
Parking and everything, yes, sir.
And everything there.
And it would have plenty of parking.
So even if, even if they, if they buy it, I like to see, you know where the old pool used to be, right there in the, over on the, by the service road, up on top, where we used to put the Christmas, right there? Right there. I think, I think that thing needs to be knocked down and just put parking there for people are going to walk in, because that middle, once we sell that property, that middle road right there is going to be closed off, right? That one.
That's what the county's asking for.
And then that area right there on the right side, is, we're going to have to develop that, because that's where the buffalo...
It's going to be, well, and that's where, in the walking trail piece of it, that comes into play, because that's incorporated, that's where it would look better. And it may be a combination of green space and like a zero scapeing or something like that, where you have the transition piece of it, so you're going, changing stuff like that.
Yeah, but instead of parking on the side, we could do that, that also improve building, unless they use it for storage and ride, but make it all parking where you come in and then you walk to the different places, a lot of walking.
Yeah, there's a walk path right there, you're right. So eventually, we're going to, we can extend the splash pad to Phase Two.
Yeah, that's what Councilman Arona was talking about.
Right, but that's too small for a pool though.
Yeah.
Right? So you would do Phase Two of a splash pad with a more wow factor, right? And I could, there's plenty of ideas, I went to like 10 of them this summer, I can tell you.
Yeah, so even if the, if the county wants to use that, instead of building a pool there, extend the splash pad with more, more stuff for the kids.
More amenities.
Yes.
More covered picnic tables.
That's what people are asking for on there a lot. I think that would be behooves to maybe put another feature maybe, but also to put covered picnic tables and maybe some...
I don't know if y'all remember that, that swimming pool, but that footprint, now that I'm an adult, is small. But there used to be 80, 90, 100 kids in that thing, that was part of it.
And fortunately, that mural's going to have to be knocked down.
Yeah.
It's either quality of life or a mural.
Well, and from a storage, we do use those buildings for storage, but we could make ourselves a better storage facility, and something that's not just utilizing it over built.
And move it further back if you're going to do it there, and then park it in the front, relocate it. But the murals, like, the fence that they want to build around the water tank and the water pumps, they can take those, they can move it there. That's on over.
So, talked to Midland as well, I was talking to Tommy Dominguez from Midland last week. Y'all are aware that Midland Space Program gave a $5 million rocket launcher?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be coming to Reeves County, correct? Talking about the Rocket Park, knocking down the Rocket Park and modernizing it to reflect the space program and Blue Origin, or whatever they're called, quote me on that one, but and Van Horn, to get sponsors that could come in and renovate that, and you put an account together, I could find you some money, I promise you, I'm not afraid to ask. But, you know, I've been in meetings with the PDC where I see CEOs, we're ready to get involved in Pecos, and we'll do anything, as a matter of fact, here you go, man, there's our account number, we're looking to build a new park, be willing to donate. I mean, that's, you're crossing the toe, you're ready to pay the tax.
Yeah.
Right? So that itself, you could knock that down, re-modernize that. As for the fields, to Councilman Sedana's thing, that's why you're incorporating the Chano Pretto and the Martinez, but they're probably going to give you kickback, because they don't want to sell the land, key word, so you will lease it for like a couple of years, maybe 20 to 30 for a dollar.
Lease it for 99 years.
There you go. Lease it for 99 years for 10 bucks or a dollar, and then we send the community to practice there, which in the future will renovate those fields with turf, or make them nicer through sponsorships, and then you can use that whatever space extra down the road, not rush it, but build more as you go, bigger playgrounds, bigger playscape, whatever comes to mind, a pickleball court, I don't know.
So I have a problem with that. You said they're not willing to sell, but they want us to sell, exactly.
That's where you can come in with 15 million or 20 million with a, with a...
Service contract.
Service contract, getting roads, because I can't, like, yeah.
They want to, they want to purchase, but they want to...
They want to play, we want to play.
If we come down a little bit, Hector, go to Tolliver, I mean, Heather, go to Tolliver a little bit, because you all know right now, that's too far. Because right now, we have this reservoir. Paul and I have had conversations, he's had a lot of deals, he has money available, we think that that would be a prime location to put a bike and walking trail on the top of it.
That's been the whole purpose of that.
He wants to utilize and fill that up with the well water from here.
That's right.
Maintain it that way, to where if something, if their well that went down, they would draw the water back to the golf course, to take care of it.
That was what it was originally.
It was. But again, that's where, we had a lot of ideas that were, that were, you know, this is the best thing since widespread, but we have never acted on it. I'm ready to act on it, I know that you all are ready to act on it. But then it would also mean that as we get here, we probably take that over and put parking, that's what Paul and I are talking about, have this here, it's a great place to sit if you want to go out there. Paul's initial thing was to put like a...
Like a pier.
A pier, across it with a gazebo in the middle. Use it for wedding pictures or whatever you want to, use it for something, go out there and watch planes. Then I would say, Holly and I have to where we'd like to put that, the disc golf thing, as well as make a walking trail all the way down Tolliver, you know, to where we have something like that, to where the cross-country teams could do it, to where you had someplace to go and walk safely without adequate lighting and everything. So that's where we could recover some green space if we chose to do it that way. And I think it would be great for us to do that. And then, from my standpoint, we have, we have facilities over here that are athletic, whether it be the splash pad and the museum, we have the rec center, and if we come down here, and over here we have Cyclone, we turn all of this area into like a parkway of some kind that is the quality of life issue that we're going to talk about.
The golf courses, man, that thing is looking nice.
It is, and we've got to realize that right here is where the water park is going to be.
Yeah.
And, so there's a lot of things that if we can tie it all in and make someplace, then we, then we set the wow factor by saying, this is our quality of life quarter or something like that, so it doesn't have to be in every single area.
And if we can sell that piece of money, like 15, 20 million dollars, that for their, for the museum, then we can use that money to start doing the things that we're doing. You said something about a bond for the walking trails?
We may have to look at that, but I mean, that would cover the walking trails, if we do that.
Really?
I'm talking about a bond, the bond that I'm looking at is, I'm probably going to propose to you all at some point in time, it could be as early as the May election, I don't know if we're going to get a bond proposal, because I don't want to, I'm going to compete offseason with the high school, or with the school, because I don't want to, we got smoked the last time we tried to do one with them, okay? We don't want to do that. But I could see us doing something for not only our CJC in jail, but also for streets. That's what I think our biggest needs are, streets and infrastructure. So it would be a way for us to leverage, right now we don't have much debt, so I'd like to get more debt on the books, because debt is, debt is good, keeping our tax rate stable and stuff like that, it's not as notorious as it used to be. You have to have a finer name, so right now, we don't have enough general fund debt.
And that's the same thing you're going to, how the school did it this last time to get this bonds back, debt is good. Normally, you know, when you talk about debt, it's...
It's bad.
It's bad for everybody, and the pre-ten's of government, it's a good thing.
There's a good piece of it, yeah.
Tolliver from, from the rec to all the way to County Route 118, could we add, pave them to the size to make a bike run, a bike trail? If this kind of area, I've been up and down, I've been...
No, it would be a separate walking and bike path, and normally what they're saying on that, that's going to be about six feet wide, maybe seven, it's going to have dedicated lanes for walking and bikes, that's the way that you put that together. That also doesn't mean that we couldn't over here on Tolliver dedicate, or come over here with something and put together one of the things that, you know, like an off-road bike track or ATV track, to where you've got them off the streets and said, if you want to go play, here's where you play.
Yeah.
So it's something that we could utilize the desert landscape and stuff from that aspect too, with that a lot of money. So there's all kinds of opportunities and options up there. And I can tell you that I'm having these conversations regularly with Holly, and sometimes we both think that we're going a little crazy and going over the top, but it's something that we want to bring to council, you know, a vision, not just, you know, piecemeal it, because I think if you don't have the total concept, it's hard to swallow sometimes, so those are the conversations that we have been having.
We forget about all of that space and land that's on this area. Like, I'm not good with like southwest, north, those directional words, but when I see it and I visualize it, it's like, aha, I get it, I see it now, instead of like, you can't really think of the concept visually.
Yeah, Commissioner Yanovas has told me that he has money set aside to have new things, so we might as well leverage the county in a partnership that way, and I mean, they're very good at working with us in that way, so it's...
Councilman Carrasco said, you know, we've got to move on this, we've talked a lot about it, we've dreamed a lot about it, but it's time to push forward, put it aside and go for something.
It's the one reason why we did Cyclone Phase Two, as fast as we have, it's the reason why we've done the wastewater treatment plan and the well water, and the new well fits, because the longer we wait, as Councilman Carrasco said, those costs just keep getting up.
Yeah.
Cyclone Phase One was a prime example.
It was, it was. It would have been a completed facility if we had been very good stewards of the law.
And just so, we were straying a little bit from the agenda as we're sitting, although it's all kind of tangentially related, but we're working our way away from that item as listed, it's a friendly heads up.
Wouldn't that support the reason why we need to go up and negotiate?
Wouldn't that support the reason why we need to negotiate?
Well, yeah, and I don't have a problem with discussing that. I'm just.
I think it's the details.
The details.
Well, in summary then, I'll, I'll wrap it up. This is prime real estate. You're not losing money. You're going to go out on maybe 15 to 20 million with a incline of services of roads of $6 million, give or take. I'm just throwing numbers out there. The citizens ain't going to bark at you because you're now giving them a quality of life. You have new business neighbors, new business neighbors that are coming in for all these tax abatements, right? Let's start taxing them. Let's start making good partners with them to say, hey, are you willing to give us a tax write-off to be part of this process? We got grant writers, top of the line grant writers paying a quarter of a million dollars. When are the, this is Cassie, if you don't mind writing this, and I'll take the heat. When are the other entities going to put skin in the game, such as the school and the hospital, to the extent where it's applicable? Meaning that they can also put skin in the game. We're taxing everybody. But when are you going to give your taxpayers a quality of life where you now put skin in the game instead of the city and the county? That's my last statement.
If any other thing else is helpful discussion, I make a motion we approve C1. Councilman Carrasco, you want to negotiate the sale of city own land, digging, described as a one through 18 blocks, 20 acres, airport.
Second, Carrasco.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve the city manager to negotiate the sale of city land as proposed. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show. The motion carries. We'll go to item C2.
Thank you all.
Discuss, consider ordinance 25-08-02, and ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 tax rate. This is Goal Six, Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. Heather Ramirez, Assistant City Manager.
And the public hearing. Let me do the public hearing first.
Open our public hearing, and it is 12:32 PM.
Sorry, I already had it open. I'm not going to go through the entire PowerPoint. I just wanted to, for the public hearing, we are proposing to adopt the de minimis rate of .44259. This is a rate that populations of 30,000 or less is allowed to adopt. I do want to memorialize that over the last four years, council has been really good on trying to not just keep the tax rate stabilized, but actually decreasing it by .51588, which is almost 16 cents. And of course, with the de minimis rate, we are proposing, it is a point zero, a little over 3 cents increase compared to last year's tax rate. And last year's tax rate was .40683.
Okay, so.
Let me get my.
Here's the one that shows the, okay, so the photo approved tax rate, that pays for our interest in sinking. And then what? The additional tax is covering our maintenance and operations, which is our day-to-day operating bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Move back to the other slide. One. Point four zero.
Yes, .40683.
We're just going to be 10s.
Yes, here's the, here's the comparison of last year's tax rate to this year's tax rate.
We're actually, we're just going, what, 16 cents?
It's not true.
No. Is this where they say .44?
Yeah.
People tend to concentrate on that, and they're not going to go in a crazy, but it's not.
No. No, it's right.
I'm not sure of this year.
Yes, right here.
.41 cents last year. A little over .44 cents.
And again, last 16 years, last what?
Four.
Four years we've gone, gone down almost 16 cents, and we're just going up slightly.
Yeah, and we had been on a incline in then, sort of the last four years.
And again, also, materials, everything goes up, equipment goes up.
Well, and I also think our acraisals, which are kind of stabilizing too.
They stabilize now, so it's going to, it's going to be more consistent.
They're more realistic now than they had before.
Also in the hopes of giving our employees a raise or whatever, to be accomplished to keep the people we have and also attract people to come work for the city.
You know, somebody asked me, the committee, the headline was, "City Council Raises Taxes." And that kind of goes back to our Agenda C1 that we, you allowed us to talk about. What do we get in our investment? You know, what investment do we get? Quality of life, roads? I mean, I'm going to miss them, of course, which you have to touch up on, but, you know, the amenities and the services that a city is required to give us. And I think this is a good thing. I will support it. But at the same time, I'm going to be a strong advocate for listening to them and giving them the accountability as their city council to give them what they ask for as well, right? Not just sweep and, that's exactly, that's what I heard in the committee. You know, that was the headline this week. We're raising taxes, but what are we getting rid of? So I'm just throwing that out there. They'll, they'll, be patient and you'll see.
And that's a deal they want a quality of life, but it doesn't come, doesn't come free, doesn't come cheap. And, and this 3 cent, 3 point something cent difference from last year to three years. And this is for the, basically our general fund, to support the general fund and everything that's, that's going on in there. And with the, the way that the, the city's growing and the things that are coming, you know, we need to, we're preparing ourselves for what, for the general fund, the impact that is going to, well, the impact that's going to happen to the general fund through the, the, the things that we have to do to, to get the city going in the direction that it needs to go. So I'm, I'm supportive of this because for the last, well, that, that one slide, that one, that particular slide, you know, for the 2021, 2022, we were way up there. Look where we're, we've been coming down and down. And, and I think the first year we, that I came back, came on, it was 2019, 20, 2020, and I think that thing was like 59 or something like that. It was way up there. And it started slowly coming down. And now, look where we're at. But at that time, the city wasn't doing what it's doing today. It's a lot. Today, this city for the last, Hector Carrasco said it earlier, back then we were crawling. Now we're, we're jogging, we're fixing to start sprinting because we got to catch up with all this stuff. And, and, you know, people don't realize the magnitude of what this city, the impact that it has to do. First thing we have to clean it up. There's buildings out there that don't need to be around anymore. It's, it's time to get rid of them. Houses that need to get rid of. There's all, all kinds of stuff that we need to, but that impacts our, the bottom line of our community. Somebody has to pay for it. And it's our community, it's our taxpayer money, but the quality of life is going to be improved by the things that we're doing to get it to that point. And nothing, nothing's free, nothing's given. And, and if we can get some of these companies that want to, we support the community, well, let's see it. Put your money where your mouth is. Let's, let's get after it. And that's what we need to do.
I'd like to make a motion if anybody has any questions to.
We can close the public hearing.
Yes, no, sorry.
And then we'll move on to the ordinance.
So we'll close the public hearing. It's 12:39.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving ordinance 25-08-02.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carrasco, a second from Councilman Sedana, to approve ordinance 25-08-02 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show. The motion carries.
Thank you.
And there is nothing else to bring before council?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we are adjourned, and it is 12:39 PM.